This is a meeting of the Executive Board. Held January 7, St. Joseph's and Fermi, Boardroom, Fifth District.
Oh, that is so sad. Well, this lady, the little house, maybe it had a hand in it.
Like the star. I believe we can get started.
We're a few minutes past the half hour, but some of our very important members had to... Come in a few minutes past the half hour, but we couldn't start without them.[84.93][84.93](Laughter). We're glad to have Ms. Hudson up back with us, a member of our board. Ms. Hudson, I believe you are the new Alumni President of the Georgia Baptist. We're glad to have you back with us. I wonder at this time if you wouldn't offer our open privacy.
I have a call, but we thank these with our blessing and stewardship. We thank these for letting us come, friends, we're together here tonight. We have silly matters to do with our possession. We ask our guidance and direction in all that we do. And may all the reverations made here and taken here in all decisions made be that of our board.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. We have a roll call by the Secretary of the District.
Ms. Garland?
Yes.
Ms. Ruth Brys, you. Ms. Hammitt? Elizabeth Dixon? Ms. Mace? Sister Kristen? Correct. Ms. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Ms. Copeland?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Mahaffey?
Yes.
Mrs. English?
Yes.
Ms. Pope? Ms. Glenda Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Martha Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Rachel Sanders? Ms. Sanders, uh, Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
And Ms. Open? Ms. Holland?
Yes.
Mrs. Bernice Dixon? Ms. Oga Bryan? Ms. Fowler? That's Ms. Hudson. Mrs. Kimball? And Mrs. Polka?
Yes.
I'm saying I have a floor.
(Inaudible).
Ms. Cannon?
Here.
You have the minutes of the November 12 meeting before you ask the Secretary to do these.
The Executive Board meeting, the Fifth, uh, the Executive Board, Fifth District GSN, regular meeting was held on November 12, 1963, at St. Joseph's and Fermi at 7:30 PM. The meeting was called or ordered by, at 7:40 by the Chairman. A large prayer was said in unison. Roll call. Do you want me to call all these names, or will you accept them? Ms. Gladys Garland? Ms. Ruth Brys? Ms. Hammitt? Elizabeth Dixon? Ms. Mace? Sister Kristen? Ms. Honeycutt? Virginia Copeland? Ms. Nancy Mahaffey? Ms. English? Ms. Charity Wells? Ms. Hensley? Mr. Ralph McClellan? And Ms. Catherine Pope? Ms. Glenda Robinson? Ms. Martha Davis? Ms. Rachel Sanders? Ms. Anne Stevens? Ms. Stella Open? And, uh, Mrs. Lorraine Holland? And Ms. Oga Bryan? Absentees, well, Emory Alumni President? George Baptist Alumni President? And Piedmont Alumni President, Ms. Kimball. Motion to approve the minutes of the Executive Board meeting of September 10 as circulated. Dixon and Sister Kristen Carried. Minutes of the call meeting of the Executive Board of September 24, 1963 were, uh, given to the members in meeting. The Secretary read the motions and moved that these minutes be approved, with the understanding that the members appointed to committees be cleared for willingness to serve Dixon and Mace, Carried. Secretary's report, the district report read by the Treasurer, Ms. Lucy Mace, moved to accept this report and place on file Ms. Mason, Ms. Dixon, Carried. The registry monthly report was read by the Treasurer. Treasurer, motion to accept this report and place on file Ms. Mason, Ms. Dixon, Carried. Report of the Executive Secretary, Fifth District, Ms. Carolyn Atkins. Membership to date as follows. CESR 8, EACT 106, administrative 205 plus one, general duty 142 plus one, occupational health 46, public health 104 plus one, private duty 499 plus five, making a total of 1,110 plus eight associates. This clears the files for 1963, except for one application to be approved. Fifty-seven members and two associates have renewed for 1964. There were 503 letters sent to the members of the private duty section. Two referendum votes were directed to the members of the Executive Board. There were 63 notices sent to the members appointed to the new committees on December 24. Letters were sent to all directors of nursing service offices with questionnaires. Forty copies of the manuals have been distributed and 120 copies are being prepared. All members of the committee, members of the Executive Board, directors of nursing service and health agencies will receive copies of the official policy book upon, uh, adopted to make precedent over, to take precedent over all previous commitments and pronouncements except the bylaws. All members of the committees, sections and groups operating within the framework of the Fifth District GSN are reminded to read and reread, uh, responsibilities of duties To send, uh, minutes of all, uh, set minutes of all meetings, copies of pertinent information promptly to the district headquarters. All recommendations should be presented on special form provided to be presented to the Executive Board for approval. For information or assistance, please call the headquarters. Motion to accept the report as circulated, Ms. English and Ms. Mahaffey, Carried. Letter from Dr. Alfred Weinstein inviting representation from the district to act as hostess, hostess at one of their autograph parties to be held early in 1964, where his book, The Scapple's Edge, will be released. Motion was made that our district be hostess for one of the parties, Ms. Robinson and Ms. Mahaffey, Carried. Appointed were Ms. Glenda Robinson and Mrs. Catherine Pope. Standing Committee's program, Ms. Mahaffey reported that plans are not complete for November 26 dinner to be held at 6:30 at St. Arthur's Restaurant, price of the dinner Printing, Ms. Atkins reported the district meter was omitted for November due to insufficient funds. Membership, Ms. Davis reported, uh, written reports stated that 110 active members with eight associate members. Special Committees Registry, for the study of the registry, Chairman Ms. Mace read the written report. Recommendations as follows, one, that a letter be written to Ms. Helen White from the Executive Board thanking her for her cooperation in fulfilling the unexpired, in filling the unexpired term of Ms. Lucy alone until November 30, 1963. Two, that due to low in finances, the services of the part-time bookkeeper be discontinued effective November 30, 1963. Three, that the night clerk be replaced by registered professional nurse, a member of the Fifth District GSN, effective on November 30, 1963. Four, that the register committee be dissolved and a letter be written to each member via, that the new chairman of the, and members of the register committee be appointed at a later date, comply with the bylaws with, which state that no recommendation from the Nurses Professional Registry covering any phase of its operation shall be binding unless these recommendations have the approval of the Executive Board as interpreted by the legal counsel. Six, that the management of the registry be directed by the Executive Board through the Registry Study Committee until the Executive Board deems otherwise. Seven, that long-range plans be studied by this committee for the, uh, for the combination of the registry and the district headquarters office. Eight, that replacement and appointments for registrars be as follows. Mrs. Anna Hooker, Director of the Registry, Mrs. Rebecca Kellum, remain for the present 11 to, uh, 3 to 11 PM shift. Ms. Louise Vaughn, night shift, 11 to 7. Mrs. Willina Orton, relief registrar for days off. Mrs. Margaret Brandon Burger, relief registrar for holidays and meetings. Nine, that authorization be, uh, given for payment of relief registrars during the past month and for the current month. Ten, the study committee of registry further recommends that in the event the above recommendations are not adopted, that the registry be closed and reorganized. It was moved to accept this report, Ms. English and Dixon, Carried. Amendment to the motion to consider these recommendations separately, Dixon, Holland, Recommendation one, that a letter be written to Mrs. Helen White from the Executive Board thanking her for her cooperation in filling the unexpired term of Ms. Louise Vaughn until November 30, 1963. It was moved to adopt recommendation one, Ms. Brys and Ms. Davis, uh, and four voted against that, which Carried. Recommendation two, that due to low finances, the services of the part-time bookkeeper be discontinued effective on November 30, 1963. It was moved to adopt recommendation two, Ms. Hensley and Mahaffey, Carried. Recommendation three, that the night clerk be replaced by registered professional nurse, a member of the Fifth District GSN, effective November 30, 1963. It was moved to adopt recommendation two, Ms. Hensley and Ms. Mahaffey, Carried. Recommendation four, that the register committee be dissolved and a letter be written to each member. Move that, move the question, Ms. English. Motion made to approve this recommendation, Ms. English and Ms. Brys, 11, far and five against, Carried. Recommendation five, that the new chairman and members of the register committee be appointed at a later date, comply with the bylaws which state that no recommendation from the Nurses Professional Registry covering any phase of its operation shall be binding unless these recommendations have the approval of the Executive Board as interpreted by legal counsel. It was moved to accept this recommendation, Ms. Brys and Ms. Robinson, Carried. Recommendation six, that the management of the registry be directed by the Executive Board through the Registry Committee until the Executive Board deems otherwise. It was moved to accept this recommendation, Ms. Dixon and Ms. English. Question was moved, 12 to, uh, 12, far and five against, the motion was carried. Recommendation seven, that long-range plans be studied for this committee, by this committee, for the, uh, combination of the registry and the district headquarters office. It was moved to accept this recommendation, Ms. Wells and Ms. English, Carried. Recommendation eight, that replacement and appointments for the registry be as follows. Ms. Anna Hooker, Director of Registers, Ms. Rebecca Kellum, remain for the present 3 to 11 PM shift. Ms. Louise Vaughn, night shift, 11 to 7. Ms. Willina Orton, relief registrar for days off. Mrs. Margaret Brandon Burger, relief registrar for holidays and meetings. Motion made to act on separately, Ms. Hensley and Mahaffey. One, motion to appoint Ms. Hooker, Ms. Mason, Ms. Honeycutt, Carried. Two, motion to appoint Ms. Rebecca Kellum, Ms. Dixon, Ms. Mace, Carried. Three, move to appoint Ms. Louise Vaughn, Ms. Dixon, Sister Kristen, Carried. Four, move to appoint Ms. Willina Orton, Ms. Davis and Ms. Robinson, and the motion was carried. Five, to appoint Ms. Margaret Brandon Burger, Sister Kristen, Ms. English, Carried. Recommendation nine, that authoriz, authorization be given for permanent, for payment of relief registrars during the past month and for the current month. Motion to accept this recommendation, Ms. Brys and Ms. Robinson, Carried. It was moved that the entire report of the study committee be adopted and approved by the Board and that this committee be authorized to implement the recommendations, Ms. English and Robinson, Carried. Mr. Mc, um, Mr. McClellan spoke to the members of the Board and reminded them, for any organization to operate successfully, successfully, the members must cooperate, uh, must operate cooperatively. Report of the Sections, NSA, oral report by, by Ms. Pope, EACT, no report. General Duty, Ms. Davis, no report. Occupational Health, Ms. Sanders, oral report. Private Duty, Ms. Sanders, reported. Recommendation, Fifth District GSN A Board, be asked to revise the bylaws if necessary to recognize the individual nurse as a group and grant representation on the Fifth District Board. The nurse be appointed by the individual group, the same as the representative from local hospital alumnis. Moved that this recommendation be accepted, Ms. Stevens and Ms. Holland, Carried. Motion that this recommendation be referred to the bylaw committee, Ms. Brys and Ms. Dixon, Carried. Public Health, Ms. Open gave a verbal report. Move the ratification of the referendum vote mailed to the members of the Board by the Chairman to clarify the payment of salaries to persons employed at the registry, Ms. Hensley and Ms. Honeycutt, Carried. It was moved that the bylaw committee, that, uh, study the Board representation, namely alumni representation on the Board, now that the alumni is no longer the first unit of national membership, Ms. Wells and Ms. English, Carried. Appointments made to fill the vacancies on committee caused by members declining to serve. Program, Charlotte Sacks, request the educational directors to serve on this committee. Official publication, Cynthia Mallory and Virginia Moe, Chairman. Um, I think that, I don't have mine right here with me, but I believe that's a typographical error in here. I believe that Cynthia Mallory was belongs down below. You'll see her on careers and she should not be up under official publications. Under careers is Cynthia Mallory, Chairman, committed to study functions of ANA Isabel Scruggs and Lorraine Overstreet. Motion to adjourn at 10 PM. Elizabeth Dixon, Secretary. I move that these minutes be approved, as read.
One more correction. Is that second?
Second.
Ms. Robinson. Our discussion. What was the question? The, um, membership report on page four, Ms. Mason, West Side Bounce, here. Eleven hundred and ten. So?
On four.
On page two. Well, there's one on page four there that, uh, we want to use our recommendation number three there instead of two. When you say, under number three?
Let me, let me get one of these things at the time, please. Um.
Eleven ten, uh, top of page two. Down at the bottom, two. Bottom of page two, so.
Oh. That's eleven ten.
Eleven ten is correct, eleven ten.
That's right.
This is page four, recommendation number two. Under that, quick, there's two.
Um.
The under recommendation number three, about the night clerk.
Uh-huh. This should be on three there. Oh, uh-huh. Wait a minute, this one. Oh, yes, uh-huh. That's another typographical error. Any others?
I was not present, Ms. Dixon. Copeland?
Ms. Copeland? Striking.
In the interest of clarity, could, on page two, in the, uh, enlarged letters and the center of the page, uh, could, could it read rather than to scent? This is, I'm sure, typographical, but members of all, uh, I mean, minutes of all meetings, copies of pertinent information, uh, uh...
To scent, maybe.
Uh, should be sent promptly, should be sent to insert those.
Should be sent.
Promptly to the district headquarters. Again, some typographical, uh, graphical things, but scapple is misspelled on page And on page three counts on the S. Top of page four, uh, Carried is not after the first motion, move to adopt the recommendation number one. Carried should be inserted as well as before again. Again, typographical, but on top of page five, implement is misspelled.
Yes, I saw that, uh-huh. But these gonna have to be done over and it's only a typographical error. I move the adoption. I've done the best I can with them.
Ms. Robinson, second. Is any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. Motion's carried, remain reserved. We have one, one communication, I believe, sixteen, so.
Family of John H. Hudson, Sr., acknowledge this grateful appreciation, your kind expression of sympathy.
Do you have a report, Ms. Dixon?
Yes.
Ms. Mace, before the trainer.
This is only a year, but if I would give a report on my personal finances, it would be out of the bag. But since they're not my personal, I'm glad to read them. The district, uh, Brock Hall was from November 1,171, '24. I now receive membership dues for 1,964, $1,820. The two together, $3,991.24. First one, rent, $63.00. Salaries, $363.12. Phone, $58.00. Postage, $82.00. Supplies, $62.76. Missalanias, $25.00. Total, $648.70. Clearing the bank, $3,343.17. Checks out, $63.39. Agrees with the bank statement, $3,406.56. Checks out, $36.16, that is $30.39. And check, $36.23, $3. Check, $36.24, $30. Total, $63.16.39. Obligations to the government, withholding tax, $172.20. Social Security, $70.60. Total, $242.80. Georgia State withholding tax, $5.76. That is the district.
Motion that this report be placed on file.
I saw the motion.
Ms. Robinson, second.
I second.
Any discussions? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
The Professional Register, now this is December report. There was not a November report, uh, anything not forward from November. The RM dues, $1,125. RM bill heads, $18.50. Practical nurses and the undergraduate dues, $346. The bill heads for the practical and the undergraduate, $9.50. Under miscellaneous postage and part-time P and, uh, $8.37. Telephone, $48.55. Rent, $125. Office supplies, changing locks on cabinets, $9.37. Stamps, $35. New renewal of license, City of Atlanta, $24.25. The balance in the bank, December 30, 1963, $2,212.95. And the total dues paid in December was five, that is registered dues was five. This is the report given by Ms. Hooker.
Is there a motion that this report be placed on file?
I move the adoption. I won't move the acceptance. I second.
Any discussion?
Just curious, is that last, uh, total dues paid was five dollars? You mean five people's pay?
Uh, just five people's pay. Uh, five people's pay, yes, exactly.
Oh, I see. Thank you, Ms. Mason. I was wondering who was getting in for five dollars.
No, 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 wasn't five dollars, five people's. And they did not place the toll.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, please say aye. Contrary, no. Motion's carried. Report of Executive Secretary, second. You have a written report. Now, we got a copy of the written report. I believe they've been circulated. We still have one, I think, we don't have one real, I believe. But also, Cal, if you didn't get those. I don't know.
May, we have a report of the program committee, Pam.
Members of the program, for November, twenty-sixth, with a hundred and twenty-five, twenty-seven cents, foster's rent, uh, four hundred and thirteen dollars paid to foster's, while they don't need any. Uh, twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents for the response. Uh, thirty dollars for the pass to the chairman, for the response, for the decorations. It's accounted for the expenditure issued to the chairman, the executive director, of the responsible to the county. The activity that we're putting here, it will count for the regular program. The members have been very gracious, they have not been too vicious, of similar self-discipline, all of our details, tenacious, dear, so the mercy development, death and devotion. I'm sure you'll be pleased with the activities, with the plans of the program, uh, the nine of the year, this year, in the value of fifty, uh, in this part, um, mercy development. It will be very helpful, and I highly recommend.
Thank you, Ms. Hammett. Uh, those of you who did not attend the, uh, event, this is a very lovely program, and I think one that, uh, must everyone land on. We do appreciate the, uh, the other programs, the meeting, everyone who helped out with this. Planning, Ms. Atkins?
We have fifteen hundred meters and two thousand schedule cards for the meeting today. We'll be getting A and E cards.
Barfield isn't here for our report, huh, by law, is she? Ms. Mays, you have a report from the finance committee, or you got your finances, start the new year right on.
Thank you.
And do we have a report from Ms. Ditchfield on legislation? She's at a committee meeting yesterday. If anyone attends, um, bring a report.
Ms. Ashton and I were both there, Ms. Pope was there, but, uh, Ms. Ashton was too often speaking. Well, she was, uh, actually, I can remember, and was pretty secure, prompting me if I don't cover the important points. The, um, we explained the, um, scholarship program, which it looked like we were, uh, it seems, uh, development seemed very favorable, so it's, um, getting the scholarship for nurses, but it is contained in a bill which, um, includes all the paramedical groups, such as the dentists, the pharmacists, the, uh, tech, uh, the, uh, physical therapists, the laboratory technicians, and, uh, X-ray technicians, and others, dieticians, and so on, that's about seven or eight groups, and also including hospital administrators. About seven or eight groups are included in this, uh, proposed bill. It is, um, I'd hoped that we might have some copies here tonight, but we, uh, they weren't ready. So, uh, they will not be ready at all, uh, for examination until Friday. The attorney general just finished with them about, uh, two o'clock today. I tried to get a copy, but I was unable to get a copy of them as one. And, uh, that was being reproduced for circulation. And as soon as they are available, I will certainly supply this group with copies of the bill. Um, and the bill provides for a commission, a scholarship commission, uh, under the board of regents. And, uh, the commission is composed of one representative from each of the groups contained, each of the groups of, um, which is, which is to be authorized for, for scholarships. For instance, there'll be a dentist, and a nurse, and a pharmacist, and a dietitian, and so on, on the commission. And then there'll be, um, subcommittees appointed from each of the participating groups. For instance, the nurses would have a committee which would act upon the nurse scholar, nurse scholarships. And the pharmacists would have a committee which would approve the pharmacist scholarships. And the dentists would have a, um, group of dentists too, would approve the dental scholarships, and so on. We're asking for a million dollars a year. The, um, President O'Rear of the Medical College of Georgia was contacted, and he said they would like to have fifty scholarships, allocation for fifty scholarships to the medical college. And, uh, that was included, and at the rate of seven hundred and fifty dollars per year. The, um, I think that amounted to thirty-five thousand dollars, or three hundred and fifty thousand, I've forgotten which, uh, don't have a report before me. And, uh, then the, um, that's three hundred and fifty thousand, I think, a year, isn't it? Seven hundred and fifty thousand, fifty. And, um, or there about, might be forty thousand, that's a good figure, but at any rate, um, forty thousand, isn't it?
Thirty-seven, five hundred.
Thirty-seven, five hundred, thank you very much. Then the, um, diploma schools ask for two hundred scholarships, at two hundred dollars per year. And, um, that amounted to, um, forty thousand. And, um, the practical nurses' scholarship was set up a hundred, or five hundred, I believe it was five hundred for them, at one hundred dollars for, for the one year. And, um, it's bad to try to give this from memory, but I, it's best I can do, I don't have figures to pull. And the, um, the dentists asked for a certain number of scholarships, and the pharmacists asked for a certain number, I think they were around twenty-five or thirty, and maybe the dentists asked for fifty, I'm not sure. But at any rate, uh, when we, um, approached the governor about it, he said he did not want any parceling out of money to various groups, and if we were, if he went along with this, uh, proposal at all, it would have to be on the basis of a, a scholarship commission. He wouldn't have anything to do with anything else, so we went along with him, of course. And, um, he is, um, supporting it, he's backed all of it, he's, um, the attorney general has drawn the bill for us, and the work has been done, uh, a great deal of work has gone into it. We had to meet with the constitution committee, and they will include in the constitution to be revised in November, a, an enabling clause, which, um, will say that scholarships from the, the state's committee of scholarships for paramedical groups, that's about the essence of what will be included. Then, um, uh, the student will have to be accepted, accepted in a school of nursing before, or in a school, a given school, before any money is given to her, or to them. And when they are accepted, then they get application for scholarship, and then they're followed through by the regent's office, and checked out, all the clerical references, and, uh, follow-up on all of them are cleared, and then they're referred to the various committees for clearance, such as the nursing committee, and the dent, dentistry, pharmacy, and so on. And, um, but by far, the nurses, the nursing, um, group obtained the largest number of scholarships and the greatest number of money. So, and they are to spend one year in a given location designated by the state. Uh, for each year, they're financed in a school. For instance, if they're financed four years, in a school of nursing, they'll, uh, go into a community designated by this commission, and will spend four years, of course, drawing the regular salary, but they will have to serve in that, uh, for four years, and the scholarship will be forgiven. I mean, the debt will be forgiven, they'll be considered paid when they do that.
Four years?
That is, uh, if they go four years, and, uh, the diploma program, they're financed in three years, so they would be, uh, they would go into a community for three years, and then, uh, practicals, they're financed for one year, so they'd go back to the community one year. And so, for every year, they're financed, they would, um, serve one year in a community. Then the, um, we don't know yet who will introduce the bill, but as soon as it's introduced, well, then we'll get information out to the, to the group. They, uh, discussed yesterday the King Anderson Bill, the King Bill, H R three-nine-two-oh, which is currently before the National Congress. And, uh, it was, um, the committee voted to withhold, um, approval of the King Anderson Bill, um, because in the first place, it, uh, actually appears to be against the resolution which was adopted by the, um, adopted at the Biennial last, when they last met, which was direct by Arteria Burner, physician taken in nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen sixty, which was to say that, um, um, that federal, uh, that, uh, medical care be provided to all, whether they needed it, uh, uh, whether, uh, provided to all, whether they had the needs to pay for it or not. And the King Anderson Bill has a deductible clause which says things pay for the first nine days, which is an amount of ninety dollars, and also a twenty dollar deductible on, uh, diagnosis. And so, it was felt that it really did not, um, uh, relate itself properly to the, uh, uh, resolution that was, uh, taken, approved by the Biennial. And so, the, uh, committee voted to withhold support of the H R three-nine-two-oh, and was brought out that the term deals bill was providing, uh, medical and nursing assistance for one-third of the total population over sixty-five in George. So, it was felt that the term deals was meeting the need. And actually, the Anderson Bill was not necessary, and it was brought out that H R twelve had, um, was signed into law by President Kennedy in September, and it allocates money for diploma schools, no, it allocates money for collegiate schools, and does not allocate money for the diploma schools of nursing, and it was felt that, um, however, A and A did approve that stand, there was no action taken by the district committee on that. Um, then, uh, the question of, Ms. Ditchfield brought up the question of, uh, supporting the Civil Rights Bill, and, um, uh, did we take any...
Geriatric Nurse Bill. Geri, that geriatric nurse bill was mentioned.
Yes, I know, but did we do anything with the Civil Rights?
No.
Just left it, didn't, but, uh, that's right. Then, um, then there was, um, the, Mr. John Burkett, uh, the road, administrator of the Rhodes Nursing Home, is proposing legislation to license geriatric nurses, and the committee voted to, um, voted that we would not, uh, voted to withhold support from that bill, because we feel that the present laws will take care of it. Well, I didn't, I, I didn't drop, well, I don't know what to make of that. Well, I think I know a little something about it, because I have a friend that, that did prepare a group of geriatric nurses. Things that, uh, nursing homes are having so much difficulty getting, uh, nurses, um, getting, getting, uh, people to work in the homes, that they want to, uh, prepare these with some nurse who has to be, or educated for a period of, I think it's something like six to, well, twelve weeks, I think it is, and then call them licensed geriatric nurses.
Thank you, Ms. Hook, Ms. Hamilton, I was interested in hearing about those discussions, what actually was taking. Uh, do we have a report from membership and credentials, Ms. Davis?
No, we have not had a member yet, and, uh, I don't believe we have any.
You too.
No, they've all, all renewed, of all, we got them posted, they were, we have fifty different.
Did you want to say something about nominations this time?
Oh.
Register, Ms. Mays, would you like to give a report on the study, by the study committee, register?
I really don't have much of a report, other than that, the four registrar seem to be working and trying to get things organized, going through the records, and trying to bring them forward, the things that's necessary. And during the holidays and all, it has been, uh, difficult, but I do feel that they're doing a good piece of work. And that is about all that I have to say at the present time. They are working.
Um, public relations, Ms. Atkins, you have anything, uh, Fisher Publications, Ms. Moore?
We don't have a report for this year.
Is there a report from Ms. Mary on Korea? And, uh, I believe we have a report from Ms. Wade, Committee on Professional Practice, that they had not met, but that they were planning to meet soon. Committee on Insurance, Ms. Bellstein. And Study Committee on Functions of A and A, Ms. Graves. Report of sections administrators, Ms. Pope. E A C T, Ms. Robinson.
We haven't met yet, so I'll ask you to take the board meeting in the meeting tomorrow.
General meeting, Ms. Davis.
We hope to have a, a meeting tomorrow for the elected office, this is planned for February eighth, and how it come out, we're looking.
Occupational health, Ms. Sanders.
Uh, we don't have that, so I'll have to, uh, whatever, but, yeah, that would be hard.
Private unit, Ms. Stevens.
Uh, we do have a report, and if it's...
Um, we do have a report and if it's over long, I hope you will bear with me because the meeting was three hours. Um, Private Duty, uh, Sections Regular Meeting was held Thursday, December the fifth, nineteen sixty three. Attendance was good. A meeting was conducted according to, uh, Roberts Rules with Ms. Dana Hudson, um, serving as colleague chairing. Ms. Honeycutt gave us a report and made this motion. I move that the appointment of the following committee to formulate a procedure to be added to our manual for increasing private duty fees based on American Nurses Association Economic Guide for State Private Duty Nurses Section. Each member having the privilege of selecting an alternate. After discussion, this was voted down and they will continue the rate increases according to our present bylaws. A motion was made that the minutes of each meeting be, uh, sent to the Executive Secretary after they have been read, corrected and approved, and this was carried. A motion was made that the Private Duty Section of Fifth District recommend that the Fifth District Executive GSNA reappoint the Registry Committee with the power to act and perform duties as stated in the bylaws and that the President of the Fifth District GSNA call a special meeting of the Board to do this before January the first, nineteen sixty four, if we are to maintain a professional registry in nineteen sixty four. Due to the wording of this, uh, recommendation, I had to mail it, uh, to our President and, uh, Ms. Atkins was kind enough to type it up for me and send it into our office. Copies were later mailed to the, uh, Registry Committee and to the Secretary. Now, I have another motion, but before I present this one, it's one dealing with the raise for the private duty. I want to say that I have that, a data to substantiate a raise gathered from various sources such as the U.S. Department of Commerce and Labor. We have here trends in consumer prices in commodities and services. It's up thirteen percent in commu-, uh, in all items of consumer, in commodities thirteen percent and in services eighteen percent. The purchasing power of the dollar in nineteen sixty two is sixty nine cents. I have a ream of things here that you might be glad to see, but they are mostly graphs and it's very little way of interpreting graphs. However, I do, would like to read from, uh, the recently rel-, well-publicized Economic Guide for State Private Duty Nurses, uh, something that I think states our position better than I can do it myself. The private duty nurse is an independent contractor. She has none of the fringe benefits or physician's security of the nurse who is an employee. Her fee must cover all vacation, holidays and sick time. She pays the entire cost of her social security as well as insurance for malpractice sickness and health and retirement. The private duty nurse works an undetermined period of day. When on a case, no extra charge is made besides this, uh, holiday. There are no increments for length of service. Now, on the following page, there is, um, proposed statewide private duty fee breakdown of twenty dollars for eight hours. I have, um, summarized it here, uh, it is based on a forty hour week minus vacation and holidays with self-employment social security deductive. In essence, it gives you the corrected monthly income of three hundred and eighty dollars and seventy one cents. This is based on a twenty dollar a day pay. From this state and federal, from this state and federal income taxes is attracted. This leaves for one person with no dependents, an income of three hundred and four dollars and seventy six cents. For a person with one dependent, it's three hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty two cents. This is, of course, if she, uh, does not become ill because there is no provision in this, um, here for illness. Now, if you feel that this is enough, uh, data to give you, before I give the, uh, motion, I will continue with the motion, if not, I will read further. Is it sufficient, Madam President?
What is the wish of the group? It would seem to me that if we had the recommendation and, uh, a motion on the recommendation and then if there is further discussion of questions, maybe it could be discussed further after the motion.
The following motion was made in carry. I move that the Private Duty Nurses Section raise their eight hour rate of pay to twenty dollars. The section was then informed by the Chairman that rates could not be raised until the motion was brought to the Executive Board and all health agencies given thirty days notice, even though this meant a three month waiting period for the private duty nurse. And I would like to you, you to know that not one nurse pretends to this. The motion, I'm, I now move to amend the motion to read that the Private Duty Nurses Section increased the rate of pay for eight hours to twenty dollars effective March the first, nineteen sixty four, and that all health agencies be notified at least thirty days prior to the date of increase. I move this.
May we have this? Do you understand the motion? Been moved in second that this, um, that the Private Duty Nurses Section raise their eight hour rate of pay to twenty dollars effective March one, nineteen sixty four, and all health agencies be notified at least thirty days prior to date of increase. Is there further discussion on this?
Madam Chairman, I would like to discuss it. Um, I don't believe that, uh, it's a time for increasing private duty fees except for certain, uh, areas. I do believe that we should look at the critical patients and, uh, perhaps maybe there should be an increase in, uh, the fees of nurse, nursing, the cardiovascular surgery and chest surgery and, uh, also, uh, isolation. I believe those are three areas where patients are not covered. Um, and I believe that it would be much better to have a differential and keep the fee at eighteen dollars for a while yet. I don't believe now is the time to increase the fee.
Uh, I would like to say that it is not recommended that we have a different, a differential in the Economic Guide for State Private Duty Nurses for ANA. There's no recommendation of this anywhere in its package.
Well, that doesn't mean that we can't make one, though.
Well, I know that's true, but, uh, nevertheless, this we have tried to do, is even though it isn't in our bylaws, we, the Private Duty, uh, Executive Committee has tried to call out the recommendations on this, even though we have not adopted it and this is not in one of the recommendations in mind.
I don't see how you can work in the differential with the register that we have as it operates today because when I get calls and they tell me, will you go to Crawford Long or St. Joseph's with Mr. so and so, a patient of Doctor so and so, and you get over there and that doctor's not even the doctor and the, and the register don't even know what's the matter with the patient, you, you can't handle it. And sometimes you have like a simple, uh, one of our nurses has, has supposed to have a simple TUR that Ann Stevens was on duty with fifteen days and he was on everything from the bird to blood to dying day in and day out and he was supposed to have a seventeen TUR.
Well, I'm, what I-
How are you gonna do that?
You could have, uh, an intensive care period set up, uh, and you could decide just, well, you could talk to somebody who works in intensive care. I'm speaking of just these types of patients.
Or maybe you're thinking of him or the other place that don't have intensive care.
No, well, they, they would be somebody to talk to. Here's the intensive care, uh, uh, supervisor or head nurse or whatever you call, she would know how many days that, uh, people of this kind need to be in intensive care and twenty dollars could be charged for that period of time and then revert back to eighteen dollars.
Uh, Madam President, this is penalizing the patient who is more, who is ill and is penalizing patient who is ill simply because he has a heart condition or he's in intensive care.
Well, then you're penalizing all the patients then by raising these twenty dollars.
Some of them have us for their pleasure, though, and they can take the twenty dollars just like the real sick ones that are nurses.
May I ask a question for clarification? Is there any recommendation on the capabilities of a nurse that you recognize capabilities of individuals?
Uh, it is recognized indirectly, as I'm sure Ms. May can tell you, because nurses get personal calls. Now, what they can do at the registry about this, other than having two lists, I do not know, unless each hospital screens the nurses that go into it as they used to do.
But I'm talking about salary wise, though. I think there is a screening in the placement of nurses' cases, but is there recognition salary wise?
There is, no, no. According, no, according to this, there is no way of not doing that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that we need.
Well, I think this is one of the things that comes up. There are some nurses who are capable of doing some cases that are, would be categorized generally as minor cases and it would be unfair to the nurse and unfair to the patient to put them all within a difficult patient.
But that's where, that's where your registry, uh, or it should be compulsory for these people that have been doing private duty for twenty five years not to attend the workshop and where the doctors are interested in teaching these nurses. I don't care how old they are, they can still learn and they can still do.
All people are not qualified.
So they're the ones, if, if they don't, if they don't come and learn to do these things, they should not even be allowed to do private duty. You should find them a job in a simple service and, or-
Well, I know.
I know, but I mean, there's any patients, you're a patient, a nurse. I know that, uh, what, uh, not be personal, but that's, uh, I didn't mean in a personal feeling, but I mean- Well, I didn't mean that. Yeah, okay, I believe this, uh, discussion is not, um-
Since we're getting into personality-
Yeah, let's get away from personalities, please.
That's, uh, I'm speaking as a member of the Private Duty Section. And when this came on the floor, this motion, I will tell you frankly, I voted against the eighteen dollars, the two dollar rate in the pay. That, as, that was my privilege and all the nurses, we had about a hundred attended and those, uh, attending, and as you know, all the board, uh, board members know that Private Duty Section makes their own pronouncements and they vote on their issues in the Private Duty Section by the members present and voted. And since we are devoted for this raise, I feel as a board member, I am obligated to vote yes and affirm this for this as a courtesy endorsement from this section.
Madam President, any other? I'd like to say something about this. I'm not a private duty nurse and I'm on a regular salary and I know it might be hard for me to pay twenty dollars a day around the clock, but I don't believe that any good nurse is worth less than twenty dollars a day. I have to say that that is only two dollars and a half an hour. We have no, uh, labor unions in this district that are making two dollars and a half an hour. Laborers are making a dollar and a half. But these girls have to pay their own self-employment insurance, social security, I mean, they have to pay more than the ones do that are on salary. If you don't believe that you figured it out from the beginning of this year, and I can tell you, I know, my husband has to pay it and it's a lot more than what I have to pay on what he's in life and he might have to do. And I have to speak in favor of this raise in salary because I just don't see, uh, training nurses and some of them do have college work and some of them are well experienced nurses. And when I get sick, I want a good one and if I have to pay a twenty dollars a day, I'll make the longest thing.
Also, Madam Chairman, this raises the practical nurse automatically to fifteen dollars.
Well, I mean, Private Duty Section, Madam, what I'm doing is setting up that speed for the, uh, practical nurse.
The state did say fifteen dollars.
So, I mean, that, I mean, we, they have to live too, so I feel that, uh, that is
Madam President, two, I would like to read this particular, uh, item from, uh, our manual here. The methods of implementation of the Economic Security Program for Private Duty Nurses who are independent contractors varies somewhat from those used in the cases as employed nurses. However, many of the same basic principles are applicable. Private duty nurses act collectively through their state sections and the SNA to promote the program to advance economic, um, interest of their group. Standards of employment are established by the State Private Duty Section upon receiving SNA board approval, they are enforced by the nurses themselves, but they as independent contractors, uh, I'm so sorry, I lost the plug. Um, they as independent contractors do not have the same employer, employer relationship as do nurses who are employees, occupying, uh, positions at different levels within a hospital or other employment agency. And this refers to your subunits as we were just discussing. There is no need therefore for subunits in this section. This is referring to the Private Duty Section. Pro- provision is made in the State Private Duty Section rules by a standing committee, but, uh, if we are to follow the guidance you suggested, then it clearly states here that we cannot, we should not have subunits in our, uh, Private Duty Section. I think the only way to solve that is for the hospitals themselves to screen their nurses for their case.
That's right, they would have to, but I still think that the nurses who are better qualified could get more money than others. There are many private duty nurses who really and truly are not able to nurse critically ill patients.
I rather object to this trend in nursing where we are devaluing the care of the terminal or dying patient. We have among us excellent nurses who simply because they are no longer useful and cannot handle these critical patients, doesn't mean that they can't give devoted care to this type of patient. Why should they pay, be paid any less? They have their years of experience behind them and without it, they could not give their, the care and the devotion and the time and actually the love to these terminal patients because of all the patients we nurse, this is the most difficult because you get no compliments, you get no appreciation, even the patients themselves are very solemn aware of what you are doing for them and certainly the family is not. And besides that, as a rule, in hospitals, the floor and the girls on, the supervisors on the floor look down, all the nurses doing this type of care, but this is still essential.
Ms. Moore, excuse me, may we have? Dixon wants to speak here, she doesn't want to. Private Duty Section, Fifth District, yes.
Madam Chairman?
This is a report of the section, the, that was what was called by, this is the Fifth District Board and a report from the sections were called by in private duty is, um, reporting. I don't see the point in adding any Fifth District at that point. I do think- I do think that, uh, in the amendment made to read that the private duty, uh, nurses, members of the fifth district GSNA, increase the rate of pay of eight, um, uh, five eight hours to twenty dollars would be more effective there than, um, up here at the beginning because we have called for the report of the.
I just wanted to read the section. Read fifth district, that was the.
I'm sorry, Miss.
I'm in fifth district, the role of every nurse in this practice profession. But I would like for the records to carry that in the support of directors. Um, the fifth district is widely concerned with all occupational groups. That we are establishing a pattern of pay that places this particular vocational group out of line with those in comparable situations, hospitals and other agents in the community. Therefore, I feel there's some time in the framework of our economy as a profession going, uh, both in favor of increasing two dollars per eight hours or two two. I, uh, probably believe that it tampers greatly in the recruitment of nurses for large, uh, agents that serve large group of patients. And I believe these agents are here to stay and that they have a vital role to play in care for that. Therefore, I will rest, uh, just proof of increase in this, 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 this.
Oh, Madam President, may I, uh, read this again? The, uh, this leaves, one person with no dependents, their monthly income is three hundred and four dollars a month at seventy-six cents after everything is deducted. I cannot feel that three hundred and four dollars is out of line in the general pay scheme.
I am commemorating my twelfth year as a quality agent in this city comparable with twenty-two other agents. And it's a report to the personnel department in this city, our class, invalidates this as out of line with a nurse and a comparable role. Because a nurse and a manager, a ratio of one to eight, and that's being nursed there. It is definitely out of line, I'm sorry, but I may want to say the train is common in our professional system. Markedly opposed to this.
Did I understand you saying that her take-home pay then would be three hundred dollars?
But she.
Three hundred.
After all the deductions.
This is one person with no dependents, uh, seeing that five days.
On the basis, five day week and any, is any.
On days, on the basis, five days a week.
And no vacation or sick time, no having.
And no vacation and no sick leave.
Madam President, may I? But the deduction of, uh, withholding has been taken.
It has been.
And, oh, uh, three hundred is her take-home pay.
Yes.
Uh, Madam Chairman.
Uh, that's the way we speak of it in a several sections.
That's true, but now, in, in speaking of.
After all the deductions have been made to take-home pay, too.
Agreed.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to say this, Madam President. Very few nurses work five days, uh, and a week, uh, throughout the year. They don't work four weeks. Uh, in fact, I've worked just on the weekends since last June. But, um, nurses do not work unless they own a long, patients, people are very, very wealthy that have them. And ordinarily, uh, patients only have nurses a very short clock. And, um, and Donna Brady, I don't believe I have nurses very long at all, isn't this saying?
We care about eighteen thousand dollars bill.
Well.
Madam President.
The sound.
Private practice, currently, the persons engaged in this practice, you are citizens of this country. I challenge.
But I do, but all the federal employees are getting a raise this nineteen sixty-four.
I have been.
In fact, uh, what I'm still, what I'm talking about, one has gotten a five hundred dollar raise for this next year.
And federal service.
Um, Madam Chairman, in all fairness to everyone concerned, and I know that, um, what has been said on all sides, that virtue in all of it. However, uh, according to our bylaws, the private duty section or any section, um, is authorized to make the recommendations to this board in the manner of courtesy of their salary. So, this is a matter of reason as a courtesy to this board. And, um, actually, the section itself, according to your bylaws, is, uh, has a response to those with the privilege of making those recommendations and discussing it in this section.
Madam President, could I ask what the average annual pay of a nurse is? They said a week, but do all private duty nurses work every day in the year?
No, no, five days a week.
Yeah.
But does she work, does the nurse work?
No.
Every five days and every week?
I would like to say that I've only been recently come to private duty, I've been back three years. The salary with the fringe benefits that I made in the past ten years before I came to private duty greatly exceeded anything that I had made in private duty.
Well, I feel that since private duty nurses are self-employed. And of course, up until this year, at the, uh, at the, uh, state convention, I feel sure that the private duty group, through error, and that's the reason that this group has to bring it to the board now because in the past, and with our new structure, the private duty group on the state level sets their own minimum and maximum fee. And at the convention this year, the private duty section voted to, um, uh, uh, eliminate the, uh, maximum fee, which makes it mandatory that this group bring this to the board now for approval. If the group at the convention had not deleted this maximum, it would not be necessary for the private duty, uh, group to bring this information to the board now. Because the, um, American Nurses Association states that they are a self-employed group and it is their responsibility to set their fee. And I feel that it is their responsibility to set their fee. And if they, um, feel that their services are worth twenty dollars a day plus all the expenses that they have, uh, I'm in, certainly in agreement with it.
I believe that the reason that was, that, uh, maximum was deleted is some of the, um, for the districts out in the rural sectors were not able to, to meet it or to work within that framework and they, that was why it's recommended. I believe it was.
Yeah, right.
I don't know except the minutes that I have in the office and it was deleted and we do have, um.
A privilege of this group making that recommendation.
That's right, and we do have a letter from Mrs. Strupin to this effect that it would be necessary to bring it to the board for approval with this action from the state section.
Madam Chairman, I move the question.
Question has been called. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no.
No.
Could we have a show of hands? I'm sure I heard.
You, the ayes.
Didn't hear, the ayes, yeah. Nine, ten, eleven, ten, four. Ten, four, those opposed. Is that how many?
Is that seventeen?
Seventeen, yeah, six minutes more than that. Somebody didn't vote, oh, again? Did everybody vote?
There's nineteen here, there's nineteen members, so two did not vote. So that puts it in the, uh, carried, that's like voting for it. We don't vote, the majority is ten, so it would, the two not voting would go to the majority. Isn't that right?
Right.
The vote was taken and the vote was ten to seven, the most scattered.
That's right.
Did you have something else to say?
I want to say that, um, perhaps the private duty section is out of line.
Miss, uh, Opel, do you have a report?
Uh, no report, we have not met since, uh, Christmas, so, uh, joined the meeting.
Alumni associations, uh, Ms. Holland, you have a report to pass on.
No, we just had our Christmas party, no meeting this year.
Ms. Cannon, Ms. Emma.
I don't have a board name, uh, so.
Georgia Babys, Ms. Hudson.
Uh, we had our Christmas party and I'm sorry that our president had designed a counter to this.
So you're it. Uh, Grady number one, Ms. Bernie Sixton.
She's not here. Saint Joseph's is the next one.
Ms., um, Kimball out here, um, Mrs. Parker, do you have a report?
Well, we hope to meet Lord Stilwell and, uh, get our cameras busy.
Under all business, we need a, a verification of the referendum that was circulated in December.
Uh, Madam Chairman, may I, um, give a report before that, uh, the.
I see, no reason why you can't. That's a privilege of any board member, I believe.
Um, uh, I would like to report on the agency meeting of the Baccalaureate and High Degree, eh, um, High Degree Agency, um, meeting, which was held in Chicago on nine, on November the nineteenth to the twenty-second. I attended that agency meeting and at that meeting, they had, um, about three hundred and eighty people attending. And, um, the president, or chairman of the agency group gave a very brief meeting. And the, um, I mean, gave a very brief report. And, uh, then they divided the, uh, group into sections. And, uh, eleven to a section or to a group. And, uh, there were about thirty-one groups. And, um, they had the Surgeon General's report before them. And in addition to that, they had, um, in addition to the Surgeon General's report, they had this half a publication. I wish all of you would put the number down and spend a dollar and a quarter and get it. It's, uh, code number fifteen one oh nine two, National League for Nursing.
Code number what?
Code number fifteen one oh nine two. And cost a dollar and a quarter. You can get it by writing to the National League for Nursing, Department of Baccalaureate and High Degree Programs. This, these, it's a compilation of papers presented at the pre-convention meeting of the Council of Member Agencies of the Departments of Baccalaureate and High Degree Programs at Atlantic City in New Jersey, May the twelfth, eleventh and twelfth, nineteen sixty-three. In this book, there are papers given on chapters of the Surgeon General Report. And each group of eleven people, well, um, each group was assigned a chapter in the Surgeon General Report and along with it, these papers. And, uh, I attended the, um, I attended about three different groups. I attended one when they were discussing goals and, uh, where they were just. And then I attended the group which was discussing recruitment, which is contained in the Surgeon General Report. And, um, I, uh, in the discussion at this, um, in the, in the group which I attended, it was brought out very forcefully that recruitment efforts would be directed to, uh, uh, the high school counselors, through high school counselors to advise that the, um, diploma schools were technical and were terminal in nature. And they voted at the meeting that they would recognize only, they asked professional nurses, those graduating and holding a degree in nursing. And, uh, they also, um, commented on the fact that the, um, there were certain states that who, which laws in those states protected professional status of the registered nurse. And Georgia, in Georgia law, your, the professional status is respected. And, um, it's accorded to those holding a license. And that is true by the, uh, American, held by the American Nurses Association. Those, uh, holding an RN license are, is accorded the professional status by your professional organization. But, uh, the recruitment efforts are to be directed and to go into the high schools and to, uh, fellow high school counselors that the, uh, diploma schools are technical in nature and technical and terminal in nature. And I have it right here in this book. And if you care to have me read this paragraph, please, then I'd be glad to read it.
Would you like to bring your next?
The whole problem of recruitment for nursing becomes even more complicated when we remember that in actual numbers, the diploma and associate degree programs are being asked to increase to a much greater extent than are the collegiate programs. And they too will be eager, eager to attain their goals. This report states that in addition to finding new ways to reach a greater numbers of talented candidates, we must demonstrate that nursing at each of its levels offers intellectual challenge often despite asthma, a reasonable standard of living, and a chance to contribute significantly to human well-being. Probably the least, probably at least a third of the students of the NLM accredited diploma and associate degree programs, programs are eligible for admission to universities as are a large percentage of those in the upper third of most high school classes. Were these students to be counseled in the basic degree programs, then the diploma and associate degree programs, recognized as technical and terminal in nature, would have to seek from a majority of their students from the remaining two-thirds of the high school graduates.
Um, Ms. Hudson, this then means that, uh, the schools of nursing like Saint Joseph's and Georgia Babys, uh, would get only the discard?
Well, I'm just reading out the book. Now, the thing that I can't see here, uh, the thing that, that, uh, gives me concern at this point, um, is the fact
that were they to descend upon the high school counselors, the careers, whoever is to do this, if they should descend onto the high school counselors and tell these high school students that the diploma is not a professional school, diploma school is not a professional school and it's terminal in nature, and we destroy and break down the confidence in our diploma schools, what are we gonna do for nurses?
By that, who you mean, Ms. Hudson?
Well, I just mean whoever's gonna do this. And I don't know who it is, but I'm, I, they certainly was, they were just having a talk and it was very free.
Who are the people, the higher degree program, who, who makes up that?
It's the, it was the directors and faculties of the collegiate programs throughout the United States. About three hundred and eighty of them in the families at this meeting. And, uh, and if that were to happen today, we could not, uh, they could not involve enough of the degree programs to take care of it, uh, the nurses who would make application to go on. They couldn't, it just couldn't be done in a moment's time. And yet, information is going out and there's already been a pamphlet prepared to be circularized to the high school counselors that calls for just this kind of program and just this kind of pronouncement. I don't know, uh, now, I don't, do not have it by the careers, but I'm certainly going to keep coming back with it. But I just felt this board should know what was voted at that meeting.
Ms. Hudson, is this the interpretation of the National League of Nursing Education? I guess they wrote this book, of the Surgeon General's report?
No, uh, they, yes, this is, uh, it's a Baccalaureate and High Degree Agency, Department of Agents in the, uh, group.
Who, um, interpreted the General's report then?
But then, they, they, these, these people wrote papers on the Surgeon General's report and they were very put out that the Surgeon General recommended that there be scholarships given to the diploma programs. Very disappointing. And, uh, I just felt that this board should know that that, that that was, uh, going on and, uh...
That's a sixty-three publication.
Yes, ma'am. It's May nineteen sixty-three, May the eleventh and twelfth, nineteen sixty-three. And it is, you can have it for the price of it, I imagine they have plenty of copies of that. But, uh, actually, this group now works along with the, they're an agency group in the NLN just as a diploma. And, uh, associate degrees are an agency group. And here's one group counting the other group, so to speak. And I just felt that the board should know that.
Well, are you ready now to verify the referendum votes that were circulated in, uh, these symbols? I, uh, I'm sure, I think the majority in every one of them. But we need these, uh...
I move the ratification. Of referendum vote. Mail to the board.
Is there second?
Uh, Madam Chairman, I'm gonna have to question that because I believe that the EACT section is, um, stated that the EACT section recommends that, to my knowledge, they've not had a meeting.
That was state, uh, uh, that was recommended at our per, at our first meeting to go on to the, uh...
Well, it wasn't approved at the state, 'cause I was in the state meeting.
State meeting.
I understood this was from Fifth District, EACT.
Oh, well, they've not had a meeting.
Madam President?
This was to go to the, to the state convention, I believe.
And it was, uh, I understand it was, I mean, I was, I wasn't at the, uh, at the state meeting, but I understand it was brought up, some of the people that were there.
Uh, it was not voted, it's not in the amendments, it's not in the board.
What is the distinction?
I don't have my pocket with me.
I didn't remember that being on there. I voted against that.
That's right, the referendum vote for the board, isn't it?
That's right. Yeah, this was circulated, uh, uh... They will return, so, uh, well... Uh, the resume, uh, the referendum vote, uh, recommendation one, fifteen approved, which is, uh, uh, the majority. And this recommendation was that the current registry fee of thirty-five dollars be continued with the understanding that in September sixty-four, if absolutely necessary in order to maintain the registry, an additional assessment of five dollars or whatever amount is required to keep the registry open may be made. Do you want to do this separately?
Ma'am, I withdraw my motion to ratify. Oh, no, was it second? Maybe one second, so we won't pay attention to it.
Well, of course, Madam President, my question on this particular, uh, motion and the reason I voted against it was because I felt instead of reading whatever is, whatever is necessary, it should have had a maximum attached as, uh, say fifteen dollars, which would not run the, uh, dues over fifty.
That was understanding that it would not exceed fifty.
It wasn't written in it.
It wasn't in it. They can, they can spend another thirty-five dollars if they don't have any money.
Well, it isn't that we don't trust the, uh, committed, uh, mismade.
You see, it was...
But it shouldn't be.
You see, uh, someone in the registry section said, "Go up to fifty." And they were talking about it. So we thought to hold it, and five dollars is all, and they, they feel that if they get a minimum cost, it will not be necessary by watching, even ask for a dollar.
Well...
They are not talking about doing it, uh, because the... There is no thought of being unfair, uh, in, and it was to try to keep it down to a minimum.
Well, I understood it was in principle and the way it was written, it just left it completely open for anyone who might be wanting to rest, you're not the press, uh, group of rest.
I believe that's got no way of being interpreted.
Well, it said, "Or whatever amount," and it ended by, uh...
Yeah, well, I know, but...
Well, now, we trust you not to go to fifty, mismade, but you're not always gonna be the one that's running.
No, I mean, I'm not saying that I'm running.
So it's not that we don't trust this group is doing it well.
Or even to, to help.
But if it continues in this manner, then who, uh, for my...
Who else to me, Mrs. Stevens?
It didn't make like that, but ma'am, Madam, uh, President, may I say that, uh, I understand you are going to, uh...
Well, let's have a motion, please, and then discuss it. Our parliamentarian over here, Mr. Jackson, could we have a, uh, motion?
I move that we ratify Amendment One, if our, our recommendation one or whatever it's called.
I...
This move is second now, now.
Uh... I don't think there's any doubt whatsoever that the private duty section as a whole and members individually trust the group that is administering the, uh, registry at this time. This was an objection in principle because we do not know who will in the future and it still says exactly that whatever amount this month would be levied in, in September as was deemed necessary. And that is the only objection I have to.
Well, doesn't that mean just for this year? Yeah, for this year. But if you pay thirty-five in January and they deem it necessary for you to pay thirty more in September, it only says five.
Five or whatever.
Yes.
But five or whatever. Could you set a maximum, that's what you want?
Yes, I want a maximum, fifty dollars, so, for the entire year, that would be, uh, five dollars to fifteen.
Could we vote on this and amend it then, or is that in view of it being a referendum? A, a male referendum, is this proper?
Well, if you go ahead and verify it, then later they can use motion that the amount might exceed, uh...
Is there any further discussion on this motion that this be, uh, ratified? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. I guess it's unanimous.
I think it, I think it's unanimous with the understanding that we're going to amend.
Yeah.
Madam President, I move that we amend the, uh, motion to read that the maximum, um, be, the maximum assessment be fifteen dollars, which would bring the total up to fifty dollars for the entire year of nineteen sixty-four.
Not more than fifty.
Not more than fifty dollars for the entire year of nineteen sixty-four.
Is there second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Do you have one of those papers?
Uh, let's get this in, right.
That's recommendation.
You want it on the other slip, then, though.
No, that's all right, but it is recommendation. I recommend that the, the amendment of the registry fees carry a maximum. I move, um... I think what you want to say is that, um, uh, you amend recommendation.
I needed to see the recommendation, yes.
You mean, you, you are, uh, moving to amend recommendation one. I move to amend recommendation number one to read
Say aye.
That the, um...
Assessment.
Assessment of registry fees carry a maximum of fifteen, um, dollars. Making, making the total registry fees for nineteen sixty-four not to exceed fifty dollars.
Did someone second that?
I did.
Ms. Holland, is there any further discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. The amendment to the motion listed as recommendation one is carried. Uh, recommendation two, that the annual physical examinations required be discontinued, but physical examinations be required of all new applicants or any member whenever justified. And the, uh, tally on this was fifteen, uh, which is the majority of the votes. You want to ratify this? Is there a motion?
I move, I move the adoption.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no. And this, uh, recommendation, so, is ratified. Now, the number three, as was circulated, that the Fifth District register a protest to the GSNA Board for setting aside one thousand dollars for the appointment of a recruitment officer without bringing this matter to the convention recently assembled in Augusta and ask the Board first asking to postpone this until a study of need, function, et cetera, was made. That this act should not be carried out until after the question has been presented to the GSNA membership at its next convention. There were thirteen who voted yes on this one. Of the eighteen, uh, and one deferred. So there were four that voted against this one. But a majority did vote for it. What is your wish here?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to point out that this question, uh, that in the platform voted by, voted in convention assembled. Uh, plank number eleven in the platform is to the effect that we develop a strong active program of student recruitment so that future nursing needs will be more adequately met. That was voted by the convention. And the Board acted in accordance with the, uh, recommendation which was voted by the convention in convention assembled.
Ms. English, what was the, uh, the vote in the Public Health Section on this? Was this to be taken to the convention or was it to be...
Before the convention, uh, the nurse in the Public Health Section had heard of this, uh, action that was going to be taken at the convention. They thought it would be taken at the convention. And a letter was sent from the Fifth District Public Health Section, objection. And when the Board, uh, voted not to, uh, taking action on it at that time, they made a study, then the objection was not brought out because it wasn't deemed necessary. So then the Public Health nurses lost their chance on seeing their thing. That came from Fifth District Public Health Section, it was not even brought up in the state section because the Board didn't cry to the convention, cry to any business meetings, uh, stated that this would be given by the study.
Before it was acted on. Ms. Robinson, did you have something on that?
Um, no, I mean, I don't, I wasn't at the convention, I don't remember.
Well, what is your pleasure regarding the referendum vote that you voted for?
I move the ratification.
I second.
Any discussion?
Madam President, as a form of information, um, I, my understanding and the way that I read the, uh, referendum vote, that the, um, Executive Board of Georgia State Nurses Association had voted on that. Well, isn't that, I mean, what can we do about it?
The, the wish of this, uh, group is that a protest be registered that until the report of further study is given, that this not be implemented by...
Who seconded the ratification?
What?
Who seconded?
Ms. Robinson.
I second.
We'll go play a long one, President.
Well, the Board, um, the Executive Board, I was in the Board and it acted according to the, uh, plank eleven that if the, the convention assembled voted, they could develop a strong active program of student recruitment so that future nursing needs will be more adequate than that. And if that isn't an authorization for some action by the Executive Board... And if that isn't authorization for some action by the executive board at GSNA, I don't know what au- what authorization there could be.
I think that my position on this would be, I certainly agree that this is a mandate to the board to do something, but it's rather than a choice of, of what to do. It seems to me there are other alternatives than, than this that, that might need to be considered, this is perceived. And that was the reason for mine. Uh, yes, not, not the recommendation, but the subject of the recommendation, the employment of a person to, to do recruiting from the state nurses association.
There was only a thousand dollars allocated, if that was right?
That's right.
That would hardly pay someone's expenses.
Wouldn't pay much.
Well, what group would decide what to do, would be carrying out this, uh, statement here, other than that board? That's it, you know, Georgia State, you, what group would be the one for carrying that out?
That's not my, uh, I said first, Martha, that I think the board has, has a mandate to do something. But it's, uh, rather, uh, whether or not it should be a cooperative effort with, with, uh, other people who are doing recruitment for nursing, other groups within the state, which has been going on for quite a long time.
Well, I don't think the intention of the board, it certainly wasn't, uh, didn't seem to be any indication there that there was not to be full cooperation with every group doing recruitment.
It was my understanding that the board, that this would be carried on, on a small scale basis with one thousand dollars. You can't do very much, working through the districts. And that at the end of one year, that, um, this would be looked at, just evaluated. Wasn't that the interpretation?
That was the motion.
That was the, um...
And, uh, reports presented and if it was wise to continue, it would be continued. But a thousand dollars would hardly pay for health, health and the, uh, mainly, because there are over five hundred high schools in the state.
We're out of order, anyway.
Well, I feel that the chances to do should be on the bottom, uh, where...
You have your motion to ratify and you second, so it's in order to discuss.
James, you mean that we discussing the action of the Georgia State Nursing Association board and I don't think it has anything to do with either.
No, this, this is, uh, that the, uh...
We're either gonna ratify this...
Fifth district registry protest to the GSNA board for doing, for setting aside one thousand dollars for appointment of a recruitment officer without bringing this matter to the convention recently assembled in Augusta. And after the board first acted to postpone this until a study of need, function, et cetera was made. Apparently, the, I wasn't at the meeting when this was acted on, Ms. Hudson, I had to leave.
Well, this was, um...
But, um, uh, the, as I understand it, they wanted to wait until a step was made. Before this was done.
I objected to this because it was sent to us before the convention and it, um, stated the public health section, EACT section and the legislative committee. EACT section had not met, neither had the legislative committee met. And without the, um, group making this recommendation, it seems to me that it comes from just a few people. And I voted against it. Because I don't feel like that ought to be one person or two people who speak in the favor of group people, uh, that it should be the people who are in assembly should make their own recommendations. Well, we had that report, uh, uh, I've seen the report from public health section and, but I, uh, uh, do know that the, this section and the legislative committee had not met and there was no report in the fifth district office because I asked before I submitted my, my, uh, report.
Isn't this the prerogative of the GSNA board to allocate the funds? It is their prerogative since it was voted in plank eleven, I think it said, is it not?
Well, as I understand this, it was voted in the pre-convention board meeting that a study be made before this be done. But in the post-convention board meeting, it was, it went ahead and approved it without the study being done. Now, what this is doing is, uh, protesting this without bringing it back to the floor of the convention.
And not the actual active staff, but the method, the testing method.
The method, as our understanding is what is being questioned.
Well, let me tell you now, let's put all the cards on the table while we're doing it. Because we have published in Georgia nursing twice the platform for nineteen sixty-three, sixty-four. Every member in this state has had that platform. It is in the platform. So every member, when they went to convention, and there were a lot of people who knew that this had come up in the August board meeting, but they knew that, uh, um, recruitment was also in the platform. So, uh, everyone has had an opportunity, twice. And they've had it in their hands a long time because that was put in, if you go back to your Georgia nursing, that was put in your spring Georgia nursing and again in your convention program. So, uh, the members have been given this information. And it was nothing that was pulled over anybody. I would, uh, the rest of... We really, I voted on...
You're voting on this, this? Voting on this. Are you ready to vote? Those in favor of ratifying the referendum vote on this recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed ratification?
No.
No.
Let's have a show of hands. Those, um, approve, raise your hand. Approve the ratification of the protest. One, two, three, four, five.
Uh, they're nine, okay.
Raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Ten, is that right? Ten, four, and those opposed. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. You count Miss Sanders behind it.
Which way, Jesus?
Yeah, still, eight and, uh, what?
Ten.
Eight and ten. This motion is carried.
Well, I'd like to ask, are you, is this group then, uh, in favor of going to the high schools and telling the high school counselors that the diploma programs are, are the technical and terminal in nature? And does this group approve that at this time with the shortage that we have? I would just like to know for my information.
No. I don't think any of us that are doing this, Ms. Hudson, would say that. We do it, I don't think anyone, those of us who do this, uh, all the time, go into the high schools and meet with counselors and recruit them.
Well, that's, the literature is going out and, and containing just that information.
I don't think any in this group that are involved in this activity all the time.
Well, I, I, I think you all know that this pamphlet been prepared and circulated to that effect that the high schools are will propose to those of high school counselors, I just think you all know that. And if you want to get it, you can write for it.
Ms. Hudson, where is that coming out, on the local, on the state level, you mean? That's been circulated locally?
No, it's, it's going from the national, all over the United States.
The National League.
Now, I'm not saying the National League, now, I don't know what they're going to start to do.
I thought this was a league publication.
This is a league publication. And this is the, uh, ser- this, these are papers on the surgeon general report. And these are recommendations which came out at the agency meeting. They had, uh, they made two other recommendations. One recommendation was that, um, they would only have the visitor for eight years instead of, uh, six years for accreditation. And the other motion, and that was carried, and the other motion was made that, uh, they, uh, flex- that the length of the visit, of the visitor, you know, credit to schools would be flexible. It would be in accordance with what the visitor wanted to do and what the school wanted to do. They voted that, there were several recommendations. But those were things that were voted at this. Now, what, now this was an agency meeting, not the league board. Now, let's get our lines clear on that. I don't know what action the league board is going to take on this. But it would certainly be well to know that. And, and since there's so much interest manifested in recruitment. And then I have here, um, some more material. Now, here is the pamphlet which, um, this is in nursing science. And, uh, you may write and get copies of the pamphlet. And they give this pamphlet here. It's printed in nursing science on page, uh, seventy-eight, seventy-nine of the, uh, July, June, July issue. And this is what they show. And over here, when, said, uh, this is now what to go to the high school counselors. And in this, it says, uh, they're asking the young lady what she wishes to do. Become a professional? And then they tell them that they are, are programmed for professional registered nurse practice and technical registered nurse practice and licensed practical nurse. And, uh, this is recommended to be su- uh, to be, uh, circulized to the high school counselors. Now, you get this book and read it. Now, this is not the league, this is just nursing science. But this pamphlet on recruitment is, is printed in this booklet. And, uh, most of the school get that.
Well, my experience with high schools is that they have very little information on nursing periods. And the public health nurses are being asked right now to go into high schools and want them to go into College Park High School Friday, Thursday, three fifteen, if any of you'd like to go hear what she said. She will tell them all about three-year schools in the Atlanta area.
Well, is she gonna tell them about Emery?
She's going to tell them about Emery. And she's going to tell about especially what is required in public health.
Certainly, any recruitment program would certainly be, would give the, uh, facts about all of this. But, uh, right now, to break down the confidence in the diploma schools and diploma programs when we need nurses so badly, uh, by circularizing such material as this to the counselors, and it seems to me that it's not a very wise thing to do, right? Right now, I'm not opposed to education and I'm not opposing, I'm not opposed to depression or anything like that. But right now, we wouldn't have the degree programs to put all these people in. And why break down the confidence in our diploma school?
Are, are we actually breaking, I mean, diploma schools have their own, own recruiting, I'm sure they have.
Yes, they should, they're pros.
And, and I mean, I think, I think that as long as we do have strong, uh, diploma programs, that the diploma programs will probably continue for some few years. And I've got to go along with the, uh, uh, ANA plank that says that within, I think now it must be about fifteen years that in order to practice professional nursing, uh, that, uh, people will be required to have a degree.
Well, that's all right.
I think that's something that we should work too, but we had a workshop on that here in Atlanta. And, uh, I, the ultimate goal of that workshop was to, uh, try to, uh, get more nurses to work toward degrees rather than to stay at one single level. Actually, to use the, uh, three-year program, uh, as a stepping stone. And I think that many of the, uh, the three-year programs are actually increasing, uh, their programs.
Well, they won't increase when the...
I did, I saw one of those pamphlets last year. They were passing it out in the Bay of Kentucky. And it is very disillusioning for an eighteen-year-old girl to see that spelled out, she is chosen in the middle. See, it makes her look almost like an angel.
It, it, it certainly does not do one thing to help recruitment now. And, um, and I think that, um, the state of Georgia and, and I think the nurses in convention, they voted the plank on recruitment, certainly, uh, took a wise step because then that makes it incumbent upon the association to make some kind of provision and provide some kind of literature to go to these high school counselors within the state and from the professional organization.
I have this on the agenda, does anyone else have any thought of this? I'm in the debate.
I want to apologize, Ms. Davies, I wasn't meaning it to work in central service, but you could nurse. I was saying if these nurses went in central service, they'd learn how to operate those machines.
Do we have a motion that we can... Everybody next to me.